Let's reconvene the meeting. Next item is item nine, the Stevens Creek Award Construction Contract to Golden Bay Construction for the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four Bike Lane Project. Do we have staff presentation, short one?
Yes, Mayor. Chad Mosley, again Director of Public Works, and this time I have the opportunity to introduce Jason Wong. He is our Senior Project Manager, actually Senior Civil Engineer in our project management team in CIP. He started in August, and I figured now is the perfect time to throw him in the line of fire. So, take it away, Jason.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Good evening, Mayor Chow and members of the City Council. My name again is Jason Wong. I am a Senior Civil Engineer with the CIP team of the Department of Public Works. So this item before you is in regards to the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four Bike Lane Phase Two A Project. The subject of tonight's item is to award a construction contract to Golden Bay Construction in the amount of $1,569,798. Approve a First Amendment to the Design Services Contract with Paccor Consulting Group to increase the contract by $96,620 for a total not to exceed contract amount of $310,483. And lastly, approve a budget modification in an amount of 1.5 million for the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four Bike Lane Project. The recommended action are as follows. One, award a construction contract for the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four Bike Lane Phase Two A Project in the amount of $1,569,798 to Golden Bay Construction Incorporated. Two, authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract with Golden Bay Construction Incorporated when all conditions have been met. Three, authorize the Department of Public Works to execute any necessary construction change orders up to a construction contingency of $156,980, which is 10% of the total construction cost, or the total construction contract for a total construction amount of $1,726,778. Item number four, authorize the city manager to amend the design services contract with Paccor Consulting Group to increase the amount by $96,620 for a total not to exceed contract amount of $310,483 for the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four Bike Lane Phase Two B Design Project. And lastly, to adopt a resolution approving budget modification, approving an increase in grant revenue estimates of 1.5 million dollars and a transfer out of $693,000. This increases, this includes an increase of $807,000 in federal grants and a transfer of $693,000 in SB1 funds from the Transportation Fund into the Capital Improvement Program Capital Project Fund. So I will present a pretty brief presentation tonight touching upon the background information for this project, the public outreach that was done for the project, briefly talk about the design, and lastly, the project funding. So in 2016, staff in the Department of Public Works completed the bicycle transportation plan. One of the goals of the bicycle transportation plan is to evaluate and prioritize infrastructure improvements to improve the safety of bicyclists. And it was determined under that transportation plan that Stevens Creek Boulevard Class Four Protected Bike Way was ranked the highest priority project. This project is separated into three phases. Phase one being from Tantao Avenue to Wolf Road. Phase two, from Wolf Road to Highway 85. And phase three, from Highway 85 to Foothill Boulevard. Further, phase two was split into a Phase Two A and a Phase Two B because there was grant funding available. And so Phase Two A is from Wolf Road to Deanza Boulevard, and Phase Two B is from Deanza Boulevard to Highway 85. I will note that Phase One was completed in 2021. So additional background information, in fiscal year 2020, 2021, the CIP budget approved the Phase Two Design Budget of $350,000. And so that $350,000 cover the full Phase Two, including Two A and Two B. In fiscal year 2021, 2022, CIP budget approved Phase Two Construction Budget of $2 million dollars. And again, Phase Two As from Wolf Road to Deanza Boulevard. In 2022, staff submitted a One Bay Area Grant Application to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and was approved in a grant amount of $807,000, and this is for Phase Two A only. In 2024, the City Council accepted recommendations to partially fund the project with SB1 grant funds in amount of $693,000. As far as public outreach goes, the project was presented to the City Council at that time on June 2nd of 2020 as part of the proposed CIP projects for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. The design includes signal improvements and a concrete island separating vehicles from bicyclists. Staff returned, or staff presented to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission on January 22nd, 2022, and there was a follow-up presentation to the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission on July 20th of 2022. As far as the design goes, the photo that you see on this slide is the completion of Phase One, which is from Tantao Avenue to Wolf Road. As you can see in the photo, there are these eight-foot-wide blocks that are installed as the physical barrier. Going into Phase Two, we are essentially implementing the same design, installing these eight-foot-wide concrete blocks spaced every two feet from Wolf Road to Deanza Boulevard. There will be no changes to the vehicle lanes, and there will be similar intersections and signal improvements to minimize conflicts with turning motorists. And lastly, in regards to the project funding, as I mentioned earlier, $350,000 was allocated as part of CIP budget for the design. $2 million was allocated for construction of Phase Two A for a total budgeted city funds of $2,350,000. The total grant that staff applied and received was 1.5 million dollars. So when the project's all said and done for design of Phase Two and construction of Phase Two A, approximately the expense will be 2.2 million dollars. And once we receive the reimbursement from the grants, there will still be a remaining balance of approximately 1.6 million dollars in this project fund, and that can be applied to Phase Two B. One thing I will note is that the OAB grant funding that we received in an amount of $807,000, there is a timeline associated with that. And so we are trying to award this construction contract to meet the timeline of the funding And this last slide just re-illustrates staff's recommendation. I'm not going to read every single item, but just to summarize, staff recommends your council to approve a construction contract to Golden Bay Construction Incorporated and to authorize the city manager to amend the design services contract, and lastly, to approve the budget modification. And that concludes my presentation, and we are available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Councilmember one, questions from the council members?
Yes, please. Thank you. Hey, thanks for your presentation. Appreciate the detail. A few questions. Is there a date we need to spend the grant? When you mean timeline-wise, like when do we need to award a contract for the grant?
Yes, so under Caltrans Procedure Manual, once we receive approval to proceed with construction, typically they would require us to award the construction contract within six months. And so we received that authorization to approve, or to proceed with construction August 29th of 2024. So we should be awarding the construction contract by the end of this year. If we don't, then we do put our funding at risk. Doesn't mean that we will lose it, but it will be at risk.
Okay. And then when we look at Class Four, right? Class Four can also be ballards, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what's the cost differential for ballards versus concrete blocks?
So as stated in our supplemental report, if we were to go of ballards spaced every 20 feet, the approximate cost of that would be $70,000 compared to the concrete blocks that we're proposing. I believe the total for the concrete blocks is about $310,000.
Okay, so it's about a 4X more, 4.2X difference here. Okay. Why is this so expensive in general? And I know public works stuff is always pretty pricey, but what is it that's expensive to implement on the concrete blocks versus the ballards? Is it the blocks? Is it the ballards? Is it the labor that's required?
The difference between the barriers, it's probably a bit of both. The blocks are probably a bit more expensive than the ballards, and typically when you're putting in concrete blocks, you'll have, you know, a forklift that's going to be placing those, whereas with the plastic flexible ballards, those can typically just be bolted down by hand.
Okay. And then have we done traffic studies on the impact since we placed those measures in place between Tantao and Wolf to see if there's been a difference in terms of traffic? If it's slowed people down, not slowed people down? Is it more safe?
I don't, I'm going to look to David Stillman, Transportation Manager, but I don't believe we've done any after, after-project studies on that. And David says no.
David says no? Okay. All right. He's the expert. And then when we put these initiatives in place, and this is just in general to everyone here, why are there no expiration dates on these initiatives so we can revert back if these are good or bad or make modifications, like kind of a post-mortem on these, on these projects? Is there, is that just not part of our process in general?
I guess your question is if we do a project, what?
Is there a post-mortem? Do we go back and evaluate to see why was it successful? What we could do to improve it? How do we, if it was a failure, like how do we kind of build from that?
We do evaluate every project we do, and we listen to public inputs. And in fact, for Phase One, we had initially constructed that, and we had received some complaints from the public, mostly about confusion because at that time we had turned the, the number three lane, which is the outermost lane, into a right turn only at the intersection of Wolf. And that created some confusion. We were evaluating at that point in time. We listened to the public input, and Transportation Manager David Stillman, again sitting behind me, went out there, made some very conscientious modifications to that intersection, and I think we've addressed the public's concerns there.
It's no longer a right turn only lane, yes. That's correct.
Correct, yeah. So I mean, the point is we're constantly monitoring our improvements and listening to the public for input.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor Wong.
There, there's a set of plans, there's a 65-page set of plans, and I took a screenshot of it, and I believe I sent it to Public Works Director Chad Mosley. I don't know if you received it, but it was showing that at Deanza and Stevens Creek Boulevard, that you would have two through lanes. Well, if you're going eastbound, you're going to have two left turn lanes as you do now, but instead of having three through lanes, you're going to have only two through lanes, and then one right turn only lane with a separated precast concrete buffer for the bike lane. So you would no longer be able to, if you're eastbound, pull into the bike lane to make your right turn and essentially have, correct me if I'm wrong, three, three through lanes there, which we have currently. Now, am I understanding that design plan correctly?
So that was a conceptual design that was crafted in 2017. That's what the original Phase One design incorporated there at the intersection of Wolf. And again, we had received complaints about confusion and the, the right turn lane. So we've corrected it at Wolf, and as we proceeded with the design for Phase Two, we incorporated that public input, and we do not have a separate right turn only, only lane. So you're looking at some older conceptual drawings that we've already kind of disregarded that right turn only lane.
Okay. So are you, are you able to pull up the current plan for Deanza and Stevens Creek Boulevard for us to see what the lane configuration is going to be there? And, and where in the agenda packet? Because I, we ended up later this afternoon getting a lot of extra documents that were provided in a link for the council, and, and that's where I found this, this set of plans. So I was looking for, like, what is the most current Deans and Stevens Creek schematic?
And we do have that. Jason was thinking ahead and has the plans ready, and here they are being presented in front of you. So you'll see here with the eastbound, I'm sorry, the westbound direction on Stevens Creek, which is to the right of the intersection here, that, that number three lane that in the conceptual plans you had showed a right turn only pocket, this is a through right.
Okay, and so when I'm looking, we'll go north to south in the westbound lane. So I'm seeing the, the dashed lines, those, is that protected? Are those eight-foot-long sections of, of precast concrete?
That is correct.
Okay. So that's going to still be going all the way up to the corner. So currently, you are able to pull in to make a right turn to go northbound, but instead now it'll be basically what you've got at, at Wolf.
That is correct. Currently, people can encroach into the bike lane and make right turns. This project here would restrict that movement, and you would have to make a right turn from the number three vehicle lane.
Okay. And then going north to south, westbound, so we've got a combined straight and right turn lane, and then it'll be straight lane, straight through, straight through, and then two lefts like we have now.
Correct. All of the vehicle lanes for this project, none of them are being touched.
Okay.
The vehicle lanes are not being touched.
Okay, so that, that's the one thing about describing it that way, that they're not being touched, is because when you do put in the concrete barrier, that lane that people could pull into now is, it's, that's no longer going to be available.
That's a nuance. That is a bicycle lane that people encroach into, and they are permitted to, but it's not a vehicle lane.
Okay. And then, so let's look at the, the eastbound, just so everyone, we're all on the same page there. Again, we'll go north to south. The two left turn lanes, exactly the same. Two through lanes, exactly the same. And you're going to have a combined through and right turn lane, and again, you will not be able to pull into the bicycle lane to make your southbound right turn.
That is correct.
Okay. So you're losing a little bit there. Is there a reconfiguration of the bus stop on the east side of that intersection?
Yes, there is.
Okay. And that's, will provide more safety for the bicyclists going through there. So I see the bicyclist is going to, will swing to the south to, and then go back into their, their protected lane on the, on the, on the east side of the bus stop.
Correct.
Okay. And that makes sense for that particular area. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I do have a question. Oh, council member first.
Yeah, I'll try to make mine quick. The first one that I just wanted to highlight was a, a response in one of the supplementals with regard to right-hand turn on red. That, that will continue to be available as long as there isn't, say, somebody who's trying to cross the, the space in a bicycle.
Correct.
Okay, all right. And the other was with regard to the relative safety of the intersection. Do you have any statistics to hand on collisions in this particular intersection?
For this intersection, we did pull up some accident data over the last 10 years. There have been 15 reported accidents between vehicles and bicycles and pedestrians. We did, because, you know, the, the right turns seem to be of concern, we did count through those and found out that six of those 15s were from vehicles turning right into bicycles and pedestrians. So about 40% of the accidents were associated with right turn movements.
Got it. The other, one last thing I did want to raise was that the question of ballards came up. When you provided pricing information for that, which type of bollard were you talking about? Because there are multiple types of plastic ballards. There are the, in some of the images that we've seen, there are the green inflatable ones that they have in downtown San Jose, and then there are these plastic sticks that you'll find on, say, Saratoga Avenue, which are temporary. So I'm just curious as to which type you were talking about, and if there's an appreciable difference between the two.
I think Mr. Wong has a photo of one of those, so hold on one second. But anyway, we're talking more about the, the green. They're, they're not the floppy ballards, but they're still plastic ballards. Is it in something?
It is, and it's something.
One second, see if I can pull that up.
And for the sake of clarification, you said that you anticipated them to be at roughly 20-foot intervals for your pricing?
That is correct, yes. Apologize here. I don't have it either, Jason.
That's fine, I can just do it.
We can try and pull that up, and we'll have video show it for the progression of the meeting, if there's any other questions I can answer.
Yeah, thank you. I'll reserve my 220.
Video, if you want video.
Okay, council.
So just to respond to the question, so the photo that you see on here, these are the green plastics, so the, there are different types of ballards. There are the ones that are just very slim, pretty much is not really considered a bollard, more so a flexible delineator. Those are obviously a much cheaper, the ones that we're proposing at $70,000 spaced every 20 feet is what you see on here. These are much wider, but again, it doesn't provide the same level of safety compared to the concrete blocks that we're proposing. So that's the, the difference, the offset of going cheaper but not providing the level of safety.
The, the ones that are in this image are, they actually 20 feet apart because those look like they're considerably closer to each other.
Correct. So I think the guidelines are for the ballards to be spaced between 10 or 20 feet. I think if we space them 20 feet, bringing the cost down. But if we are to space them 10 feet, it'll probably be approximately $140,000 compared to the 70.
And I think what you see here in this photo is probably about 10 feet apart.
Yeah, the striping, I think, is something like 12, so yeah, thanks.
Okay, council member one.
I just had a quick question. I mean, numbers were thrown out, and I just still want to make sure that we use numbers properly. David, David, I was wondering how many right turns are typically made at that intersection? That's a hypothetical, so don't, don't even have to answer that, but 15 out of millions of right turns over a 10-year period is .0015% of accidents, so we don't want to take that 40% number out of context. And I would say 15 is 15 too many, but in the context of numbers and stats, that's a very, 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 very small number in terms of right turns being made. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that was just stated out there.
And then just, just a brief statement, we did approve Division Zero Plan last year, which really kind of hopes to make that not even .000015, just trying to make it zero.
I looked up online, it's debatable whether forcing cars to make a sharp right turn is safer for the bicyclist. Some of bicyclists says, if when you allow cars to take the bicycle lane, because cars and bikes share the same lane, they actually, it's safer for them to actually go together rather than bicyclist will get caught off by a right turn vehicle. That actually is more dangerous, that according to some bicyclists. And I consulted some avid bicycle rider, and they say that the bollard is sufficiently safe for them. Also, concrete, in case fast bicyclists is on a bike path, is blocked by a slow rider, they have no way of passing them, even when there is no other cars around. So it's very inflexible, plus we know the leaf sweeping the issue that we, we have seen in concrete. So there are, for each option, there are pros and cons for each, and not, not one is definitely safer. I think some would argue concrete creates more danger when you hit them also. Yeah. Okay. So, council member Mohan.
Director Mosley, talking about the intersections, we're still going with right on red, except we're not saying turn right from the bike lane. We are saying turn right from the designated vehicle lane.
That is correct. I think just for clarity, people are not typically going straight from the designated bike lanes, and so they've associated the bike lanes with right turn lanes, but that's not the case. They are bike lanes. So, but yes, people would be turning right from the vehicle lane.
Right. And, and what stops the bicyclist from going through?
The bicyclist can go through. In this case, what we are doing is...
Let's say it's a green.
Yeah, in this case, what we're doing is we're providing a, a short separated bike phase where the bicyclists have approximately, and this will all be timed accordingly, but approximately eight seconds to proceed through and into the, or into and potentially through the intersection before the cars receive their green light to go.
Okay, so there's a timing difference.
There's a timing issue. I mean, I don't really want to get into that level of detail at the meeting, and honestly, I'm not the person for that. This guy behind me is the master, so.
Okay. No, I have enough, thank you.
Okay, so let's go to public comment, and how many?
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak currently, six minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy. And I now see two hands raised virtually.
Good evening, council members and staff. I'm 100% for the ballards, one for saving money, but most important because as a driver, I can see the ballards. At night, those concrete blocks often are not visible when it's raining, and you can't tell if you're going to try and make a right turn, whether you've passed that concrete block. And I've seen on Stevens Creek near the B of A, one time in a period of an hour, two cars hitting the concrete blocks trying to get in because they couldn't see them. So ballards for safety and also for expense. And I hear you talk about cars and bicycles with nothing about pedestrians. And this intersection, Deans and Stevens Creek, it has a lot of pedestrians. So does Wolf and Stevens Creek, Deanza and Homestead. And there's nothing, as a, as a car waiting for my green light or waiting to turn right, if I see pedestrians sitting, standing there on the corner, I'm terrified that the light will turn green and their light will turn green and will both go together. And so, and it's the potential to hit a pedestrian, knowing that they're there. So I've seen where you can have no right on red for a period of time to allow pedestrians, the delay if the pedestrians were allowed to cross too with the bikes. But these projects need to think about the pedestrians too and have a discussion about it. So, anyway, thank you. Ballards, please.
Thank you, Peggy. Next we have Sima Linsfog. Welcome, Sima.
Hi there. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. So I, I want to address a couple of things. I'm actually kind of shocked to hear Councilmember Ray saying that 15 is an acceptable number in his book of pedestrians and cyclists getting hit, especially when the previous council just adopted a Vision Zero Plan. I don't think a single pedestrian or cyclist is an acceptable number. I don't think a single pedestrian or cyclist is an acceptable number, I don't think two or five, or let alone fifteen. So really shocking to hear that just minimized because it's a low percentage. I would think that the families and loved ones of those fifteen people who got seriously injured or lost their lives would beg to differ. So that's, that's my first point. The second point is between bollards and concrete blocks, there is no, it's, it's not a matter of opinion, or some cyclists say that they prefer this, or some cyclists say they feel that bollards are safer. It settles science, it settles data, the National Highway Association, it's, there's all the data out there saying that concrete blocks are safer for cyclists. Period, end of story. Concrete blocks will slow down or stop cars, bollards will not. Mahi Kotari on Foothill Boulevard would not have been saved if there had been bollards between her and that truck. With, with concrete blocks, she might have lived. Same thing with Ethan Wong, he would not have been saved by bollards. So let's not pretend or, or say, well, some cyclists feel that bollards are safe. That is simply not the case. Same thing with mixing cars and bikes at the intersection. It is settled science. I don't care if some cyclists think that it's safe for bicycles and cars to mix, that is not what the data shows, and we can't create false equivalencies by saying, well, some people think that it's safe, therefore that's as good as science. The fact is, students every day use Stevens Creek Boulevard to get to school, and I would love to see this council speak for the safety of these students, and do what the project is asking you to do, and approve these concrete barriers, because fifteen is too many, one is too many. We should be protecting our citizens, especially our students. So please approve these concrete barriers, thank you.
Thank you, Sima. Next, we have Sam R., followed by Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Sam.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers, I'm speaking on behalf of myself only. I would like to ask the council to consider that you have appointed a new Bike Pet Commission, new commissioners are coming in, and it is important to make sure that you get community input extensively, given that projects that have been done have not received input. I drive on these roads every day, both Stevens Creek and McLellan, and I can tell you, I repeatedly see rash driver behavior due to that right turn junction or the right turn intersection, because they're unable to make the turn in a manner that lets them pass through that intersection, and so they're taking more risk in trying to cut in. And just today, I had two incidents where I had to violently swerve because of that kind of situation, both of them being on McLellan. And so we have not seen enough studies from the traffic department, in fact, I'm surprised that this entire session was presented by Public Works and not Traffic Engineering. I would have liked to see Traffic Engineering sitting at the podium, answering questions, and, and presenting a traffic study on how driver safety has been impacted because of these intersections. I believe we just don't have enough data for these projects. Stevens Creek is an extremely dangerous road, and as you head westbound, particularly west of Deansa, it gets even more chaotic because of the turns into the shopping centers, and as you get west of eighty-five, it gets even more chaotic because the road narrows significantly. So I don't believe this project is one that we should be moving forward. I think this needs a lot more community input. Going back to my earlier comment, I don't believe we should make decisions based on the few people that show up here to speak, either for or against. I think many of you have heard from thousands of residents, when I talk to residents in my community, I hear universal comments that these concrete blocks are a waste of money, and they interfere in safety, they don't help safety. As far as the Foothill Boulevard incident, I believe that is being politicized. I would like to see traffic studies of what speed an automotive needs to be at to be able to cross a concrete barrier of that lane. We frequently see any sedan is able to climb a sidewalk easily, and they're not even at any speed. So even at speeds of twenty-five, and Stevens Creek is often thirty-five to forty or more, there is no protection from a concrete cinder block. In fact, it makes the situation worse, because people may accidentally go over it, not being able to estimate the lane width. So I ask you, we simply don't have the data, we don't have postmortem data, and I ask you to send this back. And next time around, let's have Traffic Engineering present with extensive amount of traffic studies, let's take it back to the Bike Pet Commission, and let's have the new commissioners provide a fresh perspective, and let's get community input more broadly. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Next, we have Louise Sedadi. Louise, you'll need to unmute. I could see you unmuted, but I, we still cannot hear your audio. Mayor, that was our final speaker, and they seem to be having audio connection difficulties.
So I, I, I'll make some comment, and then I have a motion that I hope to move us forward. So I'm sharing my screen, okay. So here is a project that's Stevens Creek. And I went to look at the 2016 Bike Transport Bike Plan. And in the Bike Plan, in fact, the Stevens Creek Boulevard is ranked the number one. However, the intersections are ranked separately in the bike lane. The Deansa-Stevens Creek is ranked the number sixty-five, I think, and each intersection is ranked separately. And the suggestion for Deansa-Stevens Creek is striping only, rather than any configuration change. So therefore, whenever I hear Stevens Creek bike lane, I assume it's only the bike lane without intersection change. And also, what, there is a lot of information missing in the staff report. There is, staff report did not even mention the intersection configuration for Deansa, and I learned later for Wolf would be changed by this project. And there is no assessment for the impact on traffic, and there has been no community meeting where all stack, all stack holders are involved, which include all, everyone who use the road, even bicyclist who also would also drive and walk. And there has been no public meeting where the design document were posted for public review. The council approved the funding for Stevens Creek Bike Way without sufficiently being informed the scope of the intersection configuration, and the council now is expected to approve contract without any data. I think somehow I cannot see, without any data on the potential impact. What else is missing? We have implemented the McLellan Road Bike Path with concrete separators and intersection configuration. We have gotten complaints, I think staff has taken steps to, staff has taken steps to improve them, but we continue to still get complaints. And the Wolf intersection at Stevens Creek, the staff did improve that to take away the right turn only lane. However, I continue to receive comments, I hate that intersection. And now I'm getting complaint about the buffered bike lane on Deansa due to the lane reduction, which shouldn't, should, it's only, should affect only some portion, but someone just mentioned to me, they saw an ambulance got stuck there, couldn't get through. So what works, what doesn't? We should have some reflection to find out. What we have been implementing, does that work? If it does, it hasn't been working, why do we continue to implement the most expensive design option when we are in a budget deficit? We of course want things to be safe, but taking the most expensive option does not always make us safe when we can only focus on one small section. And I, I heard there is a traffic camera on Wolf, do we have data on that? And take a look at Palo Alto, for one intersection improvement for San Antonio and Charleston intersection, one intersection, they had four community meetings, staff proposed the four design options, and then the Planning Transportation Commission approved the, the design option, and the council approved the design option before they moved to any contracting, contract, RFP for contract. And let's look at the cost comparison. Concrete separators from the supplemental report is about three hundred thirty-five thousand. Bollards is about seventy thousand, and there is a significant price difference. And then if we add in traffic signal upgrades, that's another five hundred seventy thousand. Total is nine hundred thirty-two thousand. If we only focus on bike lane and don't put a lot of improvement on intersection, we can cover thirteen times of the bike lane that we can cover in Stevens Creek with the same amount of dollars. If I look at the 2016 Master Plan, we had this graph of separated Bike Way network. I think we need bike corridors that are safe, and we should focus on implementing Class Four bike lanes, cover this network, so with the most economically efficient option. And I see other cities, San Jose, Santa Clara, other cities, they focus on covering more road with cheaper, more economic solutions. So here is my motion. I would like to refer the project back to engage all road users to consider design options that provide sufficient safety for bicyclists, pedestrians, and drivers while considering various cost options. And conduct community meetings for intersection changes, especially when it affect drivers and emergency vehicle access. And the bike, and assess impact to all, all road users. The Bike Pet Commission and the Planning Commission should consider design options, not just be presented with only one design, to make recommendations to the council. And then we put the design options at the future council meeting for approval with different cost options. I, this is something I have always wanted to see, to do since I got elected in 2019. When we implemented the McLellan Road separator, I didn't feel that's right. I think I submitted many design options to staff, they are all ignored because they sit down. Okay, I said, I saw fine, okay, I'll see how it goes. And then the Wolf Road, and then every time I feel like, okay, I trust the staff, but then I think it's time we have reflect on the process and adopt a process that's really engage the community, rather than having a back of the door, rather than decide the design behind closed door, and only at the Bike Pet Commission when the design is not even put on the agenda packet. So there is nowhere anyone can even find any of the Bike Pass design. That's not an appropriate process for a public agency when we are investing millions of dollars for this project. So that's my motion. May I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay.
May I speak?
Yes, Councilmember Wong.
Sorry, oh, my time's on, ooh, I gotta move, okay. First of all, I want to acknowledge staff for their hard work. These are not easy decisions. It's important that we have better input and reflect where we are in 2025. Contrary to some of the public comments, I believe most of us want safe routes for bikers, pedestrians, and our vehicles. We want safe lanes when we bike, we want efficient lanes when we drive, and we want to know we can make crossings as pedestrians. We don't want folks speeding in our neighborhoods, and we want to make sure our kids have safe transit options. What we've heard from residents who both drive and bike and walk during this last election cycle is that they do not want lane reductions, nor that they want to have any level of service reductions on our surface streets for commuting. We also want safe streets in our residential neighborhoods and traffic calming for our neighborhoods. At times, these are conflicting things we need to have a higher level of precision for. How we get there and balance the needs of the majority and the minority is the key point here. It's hard to have your cake and eat it too, so I know this is a tough challenge that you guys are facing. Stevens Creek is a very busy quarter, especially given the heavy commute times of eight to ten in the morning and three thirty PM to seven. The blocked right turns have caused much grief on northbound Wolf and westbound Stevens Creek and southbound Wolf and westbound Stevens Creek. Adding to that is not going to make anyone happier. Time is money, and if we have hundreds, even thousands of drivers, who many are also bikes like bicyclists, were not driving, they're going to be impacted. When I biked out there, and I've, I've looked at this for quite some time, when I've biked out there during the commute times of three to seven for the past few weeks, I noticed we have a surge of kids coming from Cupertino High School after school, from the schools, and it tapers off about four PM, and then there's a bunch after four PM. The bike lanes are pretty empty after about four or five. Meanwhile, we have hundreds of cars picking up young kids, older relatives, commuting back from activities, running errands. That's ten to twelve minutes of commute for almost two hundred days a year's of commute. That's a lot of inconvenience to a lot of people, for a few of us on the bikes. We need to be more mindful. We need to apply policies with common sense on who's impacted the most and whether this is a good trade-off of our time. We don't have the data, we haven't done the studies. Why are we inconveniencing so many people here? We have put these bike lanes in with no metrics on impact to service reductions, just like Deansa Lane Reduction, which has created havoc for most residents. We've added ten to twelve minutes with that lane reduction. Like many of you on the dais, we get these emails and complaints, but those are just the vocal few, and I agree with Sam R. here, most of our folks are too busy. When we knocked on doors, this was a huge complaint. We have also not put expiration dates for these bike lanes. We do not have enforcement for cars hitting bikers, pedestrians walking into bike paths, bikers in the wrong lanes, bikers going the wrong direction who run lights, nor are we cleaning and maintaining these lanes from debris. In fact, I am, I almost popped a tire while riding a few weeks back because of all the debris accumulated in some of these lanes. If we put these lanes up, they have to be easy to clean as well, and we have to enforce traffic laws for cars, bikers, and pedestrians. That's what Vision Zero is about. I've asked many fellow bikers, would they rather have the bollards or the Class Four concrete dividers? And that's not a scientific study, right? But even as a biker, I would rather be able to see where those lanes are, and I'd rather have the cars know where I am. People are running those concrete barriers, you see it, you see the skid marks on the barriers, on the concrete blocks. They want the bollards because it puts a wall up and are less confusing for motorists. Motorists who bike also want to use, see the delineation for ingress and ingress belongs, and the good news is that bollards are one-third the cost, and we could actually put them further out through the lanes if we need to. Most important point, we have a new Bike Pet Commission and a new Planning Commission. We had approvals on the Bike Pet Commission, but not planning and not council. We have a severe oversight issue where Bike Pet passes something without planning or council approval. We have a pattern where projects are approved without a proper process, which is what the mayor is saying. This is another reason why we need to also look at, to make sure that Public Works projects for transportation are under the purview of the Planning Commission. So I agree with the mayor here, as a resident-focused council, the needs of many need to be considered, and I would agree with the proposal, this needs to be sent back to the new Bike Pet Commission, we need more community input, and we need it, and because we have a new administration, we also need to make sure the Planning Commission, the council actually have time to do this. And the good news is, we still have time to approve this to make sure we meet our grant
Any comments or anyone would like to, and suggest friendly amendment?
Through the mayor.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you. I would like to just share a little bit more information. I'm going to use the overhead. Okay, so just as a reminder, we do have the, the, some of the data regarding Stevens Creek Boulevard. This is the bicycle collision report. You can see the severe injury, other visible injury, complaint of pain from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen.
Point of order, I actually cannot see the projected screen on my Zoom meeting. Can the public see it? Because I usually do screenshot here, I can see, so I can do screenshot.
It's, it's on your monitor. Thank you. So the, the point of this being that Stevens Creek Boulevard has had multiple bicycle collisions, and I would like to thank Director Mosley for providing the collision summary report. I asked for data regarding Stevens Creek and Deanser Boulevard. It looks as though there's probably data for the entire stretch of Stevens Creek as well. And the collision summary report did show two fatalities, one being last year as, as well at the Stevens Creek and Deanser Boulevard intersection. So I want to make sure people are aware of the, the safety issues that are along this stretch. The timer is not going on me, and I'm going to take advantage of that. So also, I, I hear people requesting the ballards. I personally don't like the way they look. It's a lot, to me, it's a lot of visual clutter. I encounter them going southbound off of Lawrence onto Stevens Creek Boulevard, and it's, it's just a lot between the striping, the ballards, all the traffic merging in and out. And then people regularly plow through those ballards and clear them out, and then traffic has a new, it's just going to go where there's an opening, the traffic just cuts through where they're not supposed to. With regards to the, the idea that this project would go back to the Bike Ped Commission, Planning Commission, I'd like to understand timeline-wise. I like the idea of collecting that information and hearing their input on it, but I also want to make sure that timeline-wise, that we're not doing something that has an unintended consequence with regards to the funding here. And I do appreciate that what you've been doing to try to alleviate the strain on the Wolf-Stevens Creek Boulevard intersection, hearing and taking that feedback and then adding that. So thank you for letting me know that you made the change over at Deanser and Stevens Creek after getting that feedback there. I think that's really important. The, the one intersection that I personally had wanted to pull out was Stevens Creek and, and Deanser, however, seeing the collision report. And I think that all of council should have this documented. If there's more that we are, that, if it isn't confidential, if we're allowed to have more of this, this data, I think it would perhaps help. And if this, if the item can go back to planning and the Bike Ped Commission, given our timeline, I would want them to see this data because if, if they're making a decision that has potential consequences, that we need to be really clear about that because I, I don't want to be saying, you know, for, for car convenience sake, we're going to create an unsafe condition, and we had the opportunity to make it safer. And if, if we're, if we're going to ignore that, I, I would want, I, I would want everybody to be really cognizant of that choice that was being made at the time. So the question being, do we have the time for this to go to Bike Ped and Planning to have some more discussion?
And I can interject there real quickly. We, you know, as everybody's aware, we have been to the Bike Ped Commission numerous times over the last six years. I mean, we have had this public outreach. Just, you know, to a certain extent, when somebody says we haven't had public outreach, we've had it. We're happy to do more, if that's what council wants. I mean, we're here to do what you guys want. Part of our concern is any delay past executing a contract from February of this year, there's a risk of losing the grant funding. We're not sure how big that risk is. Our transportation manager has asked a lot of questions over the last week or so. At first, it sounded really bad, and then it sounded like maybe not that bad, but either way, we don't have a definitive, no, we're safe. There is a risk associated with that. At this point in time, we think it's minor-ish.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm running out of time. I guess I would suggest that if it is all possible, that it could go to the Planning Commission for their meeting next week and then return to council the following week. And any available Bike Ped Commissioners who are able to either write in on the, on the item and share their comments or show up at the meeting and, and speak to the Planning Commission to add their, their thoughts that they do so. And also, including the, the idea about having the ballards, because I'd like to hear if other people have the same impression of that, that look, because this is a very long stretch to have that many of these little plastic structures put in.
And I would like to state, I'm not sure we'd be able to have it to the Planning Commission by next week. We could potentially take it to the Bike Ped Commission, but the Planning Commission would probably have to be the one afterwards.
So when, when is Bike Ped meeting next?
The twenty-first, twentieth, the twentieth.
Okay, and then that puts us back, getting this back to council in March.
Correct.
Is that an acceptable timeframe?
I think anything past February is a risk.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Fu and then Councilmember Mohan.
So I'll point out again, we've done six years' worth of public outreach on this. It's had many, many touchpoints, both with council and with the Planning Commission and with the public in general. And that's with councils of very different configurations, Bike Ped Commissions with very different configurations, including frankly, the three people who were just appointed to it. Every single one of them has previously served on the Bike Ped Commission, so they've had input on this. I, I feel like there's a lot of excuse-making here for why we should delay things, and to me, that makes really no sense when we've had this much public process. As for the ballards themselves, I will say at least two things. I agree with, with Vice Mayor Moore with regard to what these things look like. They're hideous. Come on, don't give me a break. I see them all the time in downtown San Jose. They're also universally ignored there. I've seen large trucks maneuver through them because they don't want to be obstructed by them when making a right-hand turn. That would happen here, and I don't see why it wouldn't. There are plenty that are knocked over, and numerous of them were replaced very recently on Third Street. I, I just don't see them being a useful deterrent, and I don't see a lot of value in additional public process when we've already done this for six years. I think people know that these are supposed to be concrete barriers. They've seen what they look like going down the rest of Stevens Creek when you go eastward on the, the street. It just boggles the mind that we would need to reexamine a bunch of things for which there's a lot of very well-settled science. There is nothing special about any of our intersections that is different from other major intersections where these sorts of improvements already exist elsewhere in the country. So I don't know why we aren't following that. Personally, I would simply follow the staff recommended action.
Thank you, Director Mosley, for your presentation and for, for the many supplemental reports where you've answered questions from all of us. Appreciate it, and we got a ton of good information from those additional reports. I am just a little dismayed by how we seem to be second-guessing traffic experts. This is not a, a plan that's just appeared on the agenda with, with no thought or no deliberation. Twenty sixteen, there was the bicycle transportation plan. Twenty seventeen, there's the Bike Ped Commission which recommended it. So, and, and these are public meetings. So this public has had input into it, and to say that no one's had a chance to look at it is a little disingenuous. I also have concerns about the timing, and while it seems to fit into the timing that Vice Mayor Moore proposed, that if we, if it goes one more time before the commission and, we, we will still have time to get it back to council and make sure that the funding deadlines are met. If, if that's accurate, I'm okay with, with that. But I also wanted to put out a couple of other points. Ballards versus concrete, that's just not a good comparison. What are we looking at? If, if all we're looking at is the, my inconveniences to auto drivers popping, I heard some comments about tires popping, about marks on the concrete. To me, those pale in comparison to the two fatalities that we've experienced in recent years. And both could have, I'm not saying they would have, but they, there's a possibility that both could have been avoided with better protection, and by better protection, I mean now, a concrete barriers. The cost, yes, there's a huge cost differential, but we are talking about a, a, a plan for the city, a vision for the city, which was established some years ago. Now, if we, if we're saying that we don't believe in that vision anymore, maybe that's another discussion for another day. But for now, the vision that we've laid out in Vision Zero, in the bicycle plan, bicycle trans, the transportation plan, all that is still in effect and it stands as of today. And I, unless we spend the, the future revisiting all that, we should still hold to what we have now. My other comment was, this is phase two, and to have the concrete barriers would be consistent with phase one. And I don't know if you showed a picture of that, Director Mosley, but from phase one had the concrete barriers. It, it doesn't look anything like, I, I think, like the McClellan barriers. They are much more, they're slimmer, and, and I've driven up and down many times, and it, it doesn't have the same constrictions or restraints that McClellan does. So I am happy with the phase one design, and this is consistent with that. And eventually, when we get to designing the entire Stevens Creek Road, I'm assuming there's an aesthetic value to having it consistent and not having each part be a little different depending on the whims of council members. So for now, I, I will accept, I am approving the, the staff recommendation with the understanding that this will come before us again after a review by, by the new Bike Commission. But if we had to make a decision today, I would make a decision to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to make a comment. This is a chart from the back, the Bike two thousand sixteen master plan. With our current, we are spending like two million dollars cover one tiny section. By the time we can cover all of the class four, that's the yellow dotted line there, I will be in the grave. If we always set the highest standard and pay the most, we are going to run out of money, we are going to run out of time. And to be safe, we need to quickly have good coverage for all of the roads that people do ride on, not just this tiny, tiny section that we want the highest standard. Why don't we spend the same amount of money but cover thirteen times more of the bike lane? That way, more bikers will be safer, not only the ones who ride all that tiny section. This is my point. We want to be safe. We need to change our priority to roll out good coverage. This is a practice that's being utilized by every other city. Only Cupertino seems to be using the most expensive method and only cover tiny, tiny things. And ballards, there are nicer ones like this thinner white ones also. And also, in terms of six years of input, I'm sorry, it's six years of input from one small group, while all the other road users are left out. That's simply not the appropriate public process. Councilmember Fu.
Yeah, I'd like to offer a substitute motion to approve the staff recommended action.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, through the mayor. I'd like to understand what the, what the timeline is being suggested by, by the mayor and Councilmember Wong regarding gathering other input in light of understanding that you, you do have a timeline that you need to adhere to, and do you have some plans with regards to that?
I, I think if you can propose, I think if we can do Bike Commission, Planning Commission, and in the middle, we have a community meeting, and then maybe the first meeting of March, we could have a council approval of the design. Is that possible?
So, so I just want to point out, just, just a point, as far as timeline, if, if changes to the design are made, you know, any, 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 you know, reasonably substantial changes to the design are going to require a new bid process? So, so, you know, it, it, that, that will push the timeline out, you know, on the order of six months. You know, anything more than sort of de minimis changes to the design are likely going to result in that. So I mean, it's obviously up to councils, at council's discretion as, as to whether to, to sort of re-initiate this, this process and get more public input, but I just want to make sure that, that, that you're aware of, of, of sort of the mechanics of how it would work.
Mayor Moore.
Councilmember Wong and Vice Mayor Moore.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, I, I have a question to staff, actually, through the mayor. Why can't this go on the Planning Commission for the eleventh? Are they not having a meeting?
That would be next week, right? Which means we would have to turn out a staff report like tonight and have it ready tomorrow. We just don't have the staff time for that. We have other obligations in the meantime, so we probably need to go two weeks out.
And if I may, City Attorney, does the Planning Commission have any jurisdiction over the CIP project?
The Planning Commission has no standing jurisdiction over this project. That said, the municipal code allow, you know, allows the, the, the council to refer matters to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
But I believe the, the agenda could be amended on Friday, by Friday afternoon, and still meet the seventy-two hour noticing requirement, right?
Again, we don't have the staff time at this point in time to drop everything we're doing to focus on this staff report for, for next Tuesday. We could do two weeks out from there.
Couldn't we, all the material is already on the council, in the council packet, just need to use the same staff report, reporting all the supplemental reports.
We've been asked to gather all of the accident data, compile that along the entire stretch. You know, you would ask for that data at the intersection, and we had just so happened to look at that intersection about a week and a half ago. So we had that data, but that was not a small gathering thing. We just happened to have it at the time. To get the entire stretch there would be additional time. Some of the requests that have been made tonight will take staff time for us to put them together. So we can't do the eleventh. I can do two weeks out from there.
And even if we do, we won't be able to consider any other design options?
If, if you just consider other design options that have a significant impact to the design, we need to rebid the project. And that's per the California Public Contract Code.
Yeah, it's a very broken process. The design was never approved by the council. Yeah, it's a very broken process. The design was never approved by the council, and then we are forced now to, to, to spend millions of dollars.
Um, staff did get 1.5 million dollars in grants to offset some of these costs. Um, otherwise, the project-
But we could have used the same grant to cover much wider, longer lengths of bike paths.
And that's debatable.
Um, if I may, the item before council was to consider the contract. If council's not ready to move to with the contract, we're more than happy to go back to the drawing board to redesign and bring back options. So I just want to bring the focus back to council that is the contract that's before council for consideration, not the design.
Okay, council, uh, Vice Mayor Moore.
So I, wh- while I'm hearing the, the, the concept that if you were to switch to bollards, you'd be able to carry, you could cover more area, um, that's, to me, that's not a design option that I would want to entertain, um, throughout the, the city. And I, I think that there would be a number of people who would agree with that. Having, uh, three times the length of that Stevens Creek Boulevard stretch, be bollards throughout, um, the rest of the city, I think, would, uh, raise some concern, um, from our members of the public. Uh, and I really do appreciate that we have this, the grant funding, um, as well. Uh, with regards to having the design go to the Bike Ped Commission, I think what you could have happen there is that there, there could be a further understanding about the collisions that have happened along Stevens Creek Boulevard and the necessity, because that was a, um, a, a significant, if not probably one of the most significant, um, streets in the city that, that needed, you know, warrants protection. Um, and so with regards to, if, if you were to bring it to the Bike Ped Commission, one thing you could do to just trim down my request is just simply provide the, the same information that, that, that you shared, um, today with regards to Stevens Creek and Danza Boulevard. Um, and then we've already seen the report, um, showing, um, the map of accidents, collisions, um, which is what I showed over on the, on the overhead. We've, we've already been given that report. Um, and I brought it up when there was a request regarding Bollinger, um, protected lanes there as well. So that, that information, it's already out there and in the, if it goes to the Bike Ped Commission, they can be looking at that as well. Um, but I would really want their, any of recommendations to be considering the, the, the accidents, what the policy that this, this city council, um, has been put forward, which is Vision Zero, and that, and we all, you know, agreed to adopt that. And if that, that is our policy, we need to also be s- doing actions which support, um, the adopted policy as well. Um, so if, if, if it were to push tonight, um, i- i- if you tell us that, you know, you're going to lose this funding, and if you, if you come back, um, in, in three weeks, that it's, this, this money's going to be gone, that, that's one thing. If we do have a little window and it can go to Bike Ped, get, provide more information, and then it comes back to us for, for discussion, um, I think that would be, um, that, you know, we could do that. I thi- I think that would work. But, um, trying to push or, or pull little parts of this design apart and change them, um, I tried to, uh, consider that with regards to Stevens Creek and Danza, and just in good conscience, I can't remove those protected areas off of that intersection and feel good about that decision. If you want to have, the council wants to have the Bike Ped Commission weigh in on that and say, uh, it, it, you don't, you don't need to protect those, those spaces. If that's, if that's what they are advising, um, I'd, I'd want to hear that. Um, and since I, I believe I'm the only one that's looked at the collision report for the intersection and, and gone back and reviewed the, all the collisions along Stevens Creek Boulevard, um, that it, maybe it would help if, if more, more eyes were on those documents, um, to, uh, to influence the decision. So, um, so there's the issue with the, the funding, possible funding going away. And then, um, if you want to have further, uh, comments from the Bike Ped Commission, um, I, I would hope that they are focusing in on, uh, the collisions and the accidents that we're trying to, um, prevent.
Um, so would you like to make a motion?
Give to my motions.
Um, well, if, i- i- it does appear that there is a, a workable timeline to, um, if you want to bring it to the planning commission, they can have the exact same package with the collision report and, um, that, uh, just a link to the, the diagram that I, um, was sharing, showing the collisions along Stevens Creek Boulevard. I think that could be done to put it on the planning commission. Um, however, the Bike Ped Commission seems like it is more appropriate, uh, body to, uh, do a review of this. I think it is too, too late, uh, in the process to start reinventing the whole, uh, community input. Um, I think that's opening up an entirely different, um, uh, project. Um, in fact, the kind of like a city work program to go over, to go over multiple, um, bike projects. I don't think this really is the time, because we are so far down this path, and we have also agreed to Vision Zero. And, and again, this, this project has been in the works for a number of years. I remember seeing, um, Dave Stillman doing a report on this years ago. Um, so it's, it's been in the works, and I, and again, I really appreciate the effort to move the funding around and, and acquire the grant funding. I think it's really good. Um, I think if, if any fault here would be that, like, we don't, we're not seeing the final design. Um, and, uh, I think if, if people saw more of those intersections to know what's happening and that you've made adjustments, I think that would help. Um, and it is coming off of the, um, Danza bike lane, um, uh, striping that happened there.
So, we need to move along. Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, you, if, we'll send this back to the-
Is there a motion on the board?
We have two motions, so we can have a, a third substitute motion.
Yeah, through the, through the mayor, I move that we send this, uh, we request that the Parks and Rec Commission at their earliest availability, Bike Ped, what did I say?
Parks and Rec.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Um, the Bike Ped Commission, uh, review this at their earliest availability, and then it come back to council also at our, um, earliest availability to try to retain the funding, um, because that seems to be an issue.
When it comes back to the council, is it a design that comes back to the council?
Uh, we're looking for their, their comments. So they're going to be looking at the, the design. They should have all of the, um-
So we should have the design and the contract together?
Uh, their comments and, and also the contract, yeah. So I'm, I'm not suggesting that they, they're, they're going to look at this, this whole project, just like we looked at it tonight. We're going to get another body, um, to review it and make, make their comments. And, um, we'll consider having some further public outreach through that body.
Okay, I'll second that. Um, can I a- add one, um, amendment to consider the emergency vehicle access with this change?
Um, pardon, mayor, I, um, what, what do you mean by that?
Um, because I heard even now at the Anza, um, emergency vehicle cannot get through when, with our re- when the, it, because it used to be they can even get through, through the bike lane, now they cannot. And then if all the lanes are full, they are stuck.
I mean, one thing I can state is our traffic signals on Stevens Creek Boulevard are already equipped with, uh, preemption devices, which, um, basically turn the signals green for our emergency vehicles.
Okay.
There's not much more we can do when traffic is traffic.
So, um, through the mayor, then, uh, the, it, it can be discussed, but it may end up being that that is the information that is shared with that, um, commission. And then also with us, I think that's good information for us to know and, and let the public, um, be aware of it. So I, I, I accept your, um, friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, um, should we vote?
I was going to add one comment, so. Look, the process is broken.
Sorry, and council member Fuwen.
Oh, go ahead, he's, oh, wait, oh, wait, go ahead.
I don't know who is first. Council member Fuwen.
And on that timeline, though, there wouldn't be room for a council meeting unless we called a special, yes, before the end of February.
Uh, that would be correct. We would probably come back the first meeting in March.
Okay.
Again, uh, I think there's a risk by not executing the contract before the end of February. Um, but I do believe that risk is low to moderate if we did execute in March. But, um, the con- the, the Caltrans requirements say execution within six months, so. And, and we did get the, okay to, to look at this in August, so.
And Madam City Manager, is there room, you think, to be able to call a special session of this body at the end of the month in the last week of February?
Unfortunately not, sorry.
Can I ask a quick question, mayor?
Uh, council member Wong first, and then council member Mohan.
Um, I actually support this amendment, but I want to say the process is broken, and the original guidelines were not followed. Intersections should not have been included here at all. Um, if this was just the original bike routes and not the intersection, I'd be okay with the contract. So what, I'm going to the city attorney, what do you do when the contract does not reflect the original plan and was bidded out that way? Do you just let it slide, or does it continue? Uh, and the second thing is residents, and I'll let you answer in a bit, but residents have seen what's happened since we've had these bike lanes. The sentences have changed, and it's really important to get the input. So I think that's a very important piece here. So question to the city attorney, like, if the plan was not to do the intersections, and now that we have a bid that includes the intersections that were not part of the original plan that was approved, what part of the process allows for that?
And I should probably just mention that the original plan did include intersections. Um, it's just that there was an, uh, I guess maybe a misinterpretation that one item talks about the intersection of Danza and Stevens Creek. That was one of those quick projects, put striping in to connect the bike lanes. Um, the plan did for the class four and the entire bike lane talk about intersection improvements to enhance bicycle safety.
They were very generic, and they didn't say they were going to shut off a right turn lane that had traffic flow.
No, the bike, the bike plan is a very general plan. It does not get into project specific details. So they prioritize a project, and from that point, we go in and create more specific plans, which is what was done with this project.
And at what point does, who oversees the specific plans for approval at that point?
So we went, went to the Bike Ped Commission, got their inputs, and we came to city council and requested funding for a bike plan that included concrete barriers and intersection signal improvements.
Just like today.
It was stated in the, in the budget request.
Just like today, right?
No, today's staff report did not even mention intersection change.
This staff report was for a contra- uh, contract approval. Was not talking about design, it was contract approval.
But anything, the last time it was on the council agenda in the CIP plan, it didn't mention the co- intersection either. So it's, yeah, anyway, we can talk about how do we improve the process later. Um, council member Mohan, and then Vice Mayor Moore.
Uh, I just wanted to confirm the, the timings. When does the Bike Ped Commission meet next?
Uh, again, February 20th, which is the day after you guys are meeting, on February 19th. Um, we actually-
And when will it, when do you envision it coming back to, uh, council?
It would be the first meeting in March.
And, uh, Madam City Manager, is that-
The reason we cannot have a special meeting in the last week is because of the state of the city. All staff will be working on the state of the city, on the 26th.
Okay, but we can get it back on, on a regular council-
The first meeting in March.
And will that, uh, satisfy the timelines we have for funding?
Yeah, like I said, indicated before, there is a risk.
And what, what is that risk?
Um, because the, the Caltrans requirements indicate that a contract needs to be executed within six months. We have spoken with Caltrans. It seems like that may not be a hard deadline. There may be the ability for us to request an extension, but as soon as we request, we're at risk. Um, they seem to be open to the idea, and we may be able to make that happen, but-
So when, when, when is the deadline? March, end of March?
End of February, because we-
End of February? Oh, so we have to ask for an extension anyway, if we, if it comes back to council at a regular, uh-
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
What if we have a joint Bike Ped and City Council meeting on the 20th? Would that work?
Um, I, I hate to speak for staff, but we already have a special meeting on the 3rd of March for city work program. So if we're adding another special city council meeting on the 20th, the day after the regular council meeting.
Yeah, okay. Um, Vice Mayor Moore.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'm kind of wondering what, um, the, the mayor and, uh, council member Wong are, are hoping to, um, alter within this, this plan. Um, so I, I'm hearing that you want to hear, get more input, um, but what is it that you're hoping to, to actually change? Because I don't support going to bollards. Um, and I do support, uh, in particular, protecting that Danza and Stevens Creek Boulev- Boulevard intersection. So, uh, could you share what it is that you're wanting to change in this?
I think we need to have options presented to the Bike Ped and, and then cost comparisons before any design is selected. So, I think we, I will be pro- I think we should talk about at some point how to improve the current process, where a this, we, the council approve a project based on a very short description, and then the design, we never see it. And then the next time it comes to the council, it's a contract. Something is missing in the, in, in between. So we can try and improve that process, maybe for the next project. So, let's focus on this one now. Um, council member Wong, I think we should, um, vote.
Uh, Vice Mayor Moore, I think you wanted my reaction. And I think what I'm trying to say here is, we had an improper process that was put into place. We had a change in terms of administrations. We have residents that are in positions in terms of the commissions that might have a different point of view as to where we are, whether to approve or not approve the contract. And we're not giving them that oppor- opportunity to do so. We have had, uh, seven years of these bike lanes in place, uh, from McClellan to here. And I think residents have been stating different kind of opinions. You are not my opinion, or just one of, two of many. And I think it's really important to have more input into this process, especially given the new commissions, and given what we heard on the campaign trail. Uh, the residents are, in general, are trying to balance, trying to get from point A to B, trying to make sure everything is safe, and trying to be forced onto a contract because of a timeline and an improper process, to me, is just not right.
Okay, and call the question. I think it's, uh, 10:21.
Pardon, um, mayor, well, I don't really have an option. Uh, my, my, I, I want to withdraw my motion.
Uh, okay. So then we vote on the second motion? Yeah?
If, if, uh, council member Moore, excuse me, excuse me, Vice Mayor Moore, uh, may withdraw her motion, um, at, at any time before the vote, and, and the, the remaining motion on the ta- table is the first substitute motion.
Yeah. Council member, the staff recommendation. Yeah. Okay, let's vote.
The substitute motion carries with Mohan Moore and Fuwen voting yes.
Okay, this is taking much longer than I had planned. Now, the next item would be... Item 11, the study session for the use of com- committee to future use the reserve, uh, one-time funds. Do I have any staff recommendation, um, staff presentation?
If you just, um, video can put, uh, thank you, my presentation up on the screen? Oh, hold on, there's a way to do this. Oh, hold on, there's a way to do this. Okay, I have a very brief presentation this evening, um, mostly going over some of the items we've already, um, presented previously. Uh, but we want to start with the purpose and next steps, um, as we understand it, uh, for this study session, and it's for us to, staff to collect input and ideas from council and the community. And based on that input and idea, staff would return with proposals, um, as early as mid-year, so March, uh, just next month, uh, and possibly into proposed budget May, and that's gonna depend on the complexity of what you're asking us to look at and research and bring back. Um, with that, a little bit of background, this is a slide I presented back in November, so it just kind of summarized the last two years of budget reductions, um, at a high level. I won't go, uh, too deep into those. Uh, but at the same presentation in November, I called out some community fund, community, uh, items that were not included in the community benefit section of what was reduced. Um, and those included, uh, the 4th of July fireworks, the Shakespeare in the Park at about $30,000, community funding being reduced by $60,000, uh, Bobotino and Volunteer Fair, uh, being combined to become the Teen Resource Fair. And this was, um, actually something that was, um, supported and backed by our youth activity board and our teen commission. Uh, we reduced, uh, cleaning schedules for city facilities that saved about $100,000. And then the scene publication was combined with the Parks and Rec brochure, which meant, um, there wasn't a, a scene going specifically on its own to residents, uh, but there was a digital copy available. And then I did just want to footnote that the mayor's fund, uh, in the current fiscal year did cover, uh, $5,000 for Shakespeare in the Park. And that is the extent of my presentation. I do want to point out that attached to the staff report is the staff report that went, um, in the second meeting in November, that had a list of potential funding items associated there. As a reminder, council did move forward a one-time $10 million payment to Calpers. Um, the, uh, other thing I want to point out, it also has the detailed reductions that were included in the fiscal year '24 and '25 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, in the interest of time, let's go to a public comment first.
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak.
Um, that's two, one and a half minutes each.
Okay, 90-second timer video, please. Peggy Griffin is our first member of the public, followed by Louise Sedadi. Video, if you could please queue up the 90-second timer.
Good evening, uh, good evening, council members and staff. Um, I would request that you keep the funds till the budget process and focus on the EOC and retro, uh, work on the city hall. Um, the services that was listed on the presentation would be the third. Um, I've heard complaints that staff in Parks and Rec, like the daycare staff, are forced to clean the bathrooms. And if you have preschool kids using bathrooms, they need a lot of work. So I, that's a high priority, too, but that would be third, EOC, city hall, and then the services that she listed up on the slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy, and we have one person, one member of the public requesting to speak virtually, Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Louise. And it appears that Louise is still having some audio issues. I have unmuted you. Mayor, it appears that, uh, this requister is having audio issues still.
Okay, yeah. So since we are short on time, um, I'll start with a motion for discussion. And the reason that, um, I think most of these items can be considered for next year's budget, uh, except one item we need to make decision now, which is the 4th of July fireworks. If we would like to, uh, still have that this year, we need to make decision now. So my motion is to approve, um, a budget of $140,000 for 4th of July fireworks and form, um, subcommittee with council member Ray Wong and hopefully council member, uh, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Moore to to bring back details for council approval. That's my motion.
Mayor, I guess I just point out that a subcommittee with three council members would.
No, not just, just Ray and Vice Mayor Moore.
I, I'm, sorry, I misunderstood, yeah, sorry, I, I.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
May I ask for a clarification question? Um, would this be for this year's 4th of July?
For this year's.
Um, there might be challenges to bring it back this year, as we are already in February. We don't have a location, and we don't have a vendor yet. Can we have a little bit of flexibility?
Um, this is why I am proposing a subcommittee. So let me disclose that I have discussed this with council member Ray, uh, Wong. He set up, um, meet, meeting with, uh, the vendors who happen to have been doing several works for Cupertino. And then they are available and are happy to do it, and they, they have, we looked at a few different potential viable locations. So Hyde is preferable to them because they are more familiar, but then they are willing to do it. They say Memorial Park is a pretty good location, and even Deans, or even Faria. So there are other options, um, but the detail is not clear, which is why we probably need a subcommittee to this, to bring back, um, viable proposal for this year.
Would, um, point of clarification, would you need any staff support for this sub committee? I'm looking at Rachelle, she's, she's tapped very thin with her staffing.
Likely, we, they might need information on, um, staffing, uh, on information about what kind of staffing would be allowed.
Because with the evening program, we would need to budget for additional positions to cover for the hours and negotiation contract with the vendors and whatnot. Um, we're more than happy to take council's lead, I'm just more concerned about Rachelle's, um, staffing availability.
Okay, so if it's, I think the subcommittee likely would explore with staff, if it's not viable, um, then you can bring that, um.
Rachelle, would you like to, would you like to share with council what might take?
So I just want to put it out there that we have also talked to Pyrotechnics, our contractor for fireworks, but it is not just up to them, so we would have to get all of the appropriate agencies involved if we're gonna look at another site. Um, I would also just want to throw out there that in 2010, the director at that time worked with Santa Clara County Sheriff and Santa Clara County Fire to look at all of the sites within the city, and Cupertino High School and Hyde were the two that were the safest. Um, synthetic turf is a huge thing that we've been kicked out of sites for because that is a huge liability, and the city has to pay back when we burn the field. Um, and then the other thing is just how close neighbors are, so I don't know if we would have the time to really talk to and throw that out there to the neighbors if we're going to move it to another site that neighbors would be in the fallout zone. And I would have no idea what the staffing costs would be because we wouldn't know what streets have to be closed, what areas have to be blocked off. It, it's a much bigger plan than it sounds like. When we have a site, it's great. When we have to pick a new site, there's a lot of logistics that go with it.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Moore and, uh, council member Wong, and then council member Mohan.
Thank you. It, it's perhaps a question for the, the city attorney. It, it al, it seems to me that there's already been discussion, um, amongst two council members about this, and it's my inclination to say that that is the subcommittee, it's already formed, um, without, without, um... And, and then moving forward, it, it seems that because there's already been, it sounds like deliberations, uh, happening that adding another person, regardless of who it is, um, from the council is, might be problematic. Perhaps I'm wrong, but it, and, and now it sounds like, mm, staff has discussed this as well, and I don't know if they've discussed it with the council members, but, um, anyway, I was just thinking, to me, it makes more sense that, that the mayor and, and council member Wong would be the subcommittee since they've already started down that path.
I, I, I think that is the safer option, although it's, it's an, it's an ambiguous area of the Brown Act, whether, whether, you know, the subcommittee is originally proposed, uh, would be permissible. But I, I think, I think, I think that it would be the safer option to have the mayor and council member Wong serve as a subcommittee because they've already, um, had that discussion outside the council meeting. I, I think, I think the other thing to be mindful of is, you know, generally, we'd, you know, we'd like, you know, keep the, the procurement and the approval process separate, so it would be unusual to have, um, you know, uh, council members negotiating a, 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 a sole-source contract, which is, you know, essentially what's, what's being contemplated here. So, um, you know, and so council, I mean, of course, would always have the ability to override its, the purchasing policy, but, but, um, you know, generally, that's, our purchasing policy, um, would, you know, require, uh, multiple bids and this type of circumstance.
Thank you. The reason I suggested, uh, council member Moore is I thought you have a passion for 4th of July fireworks, and maybe you can provide better input in, uh, a recommendation to the council. And I think everything we have discussed, I've disclosed that, so I don't think there is any, any two council member can from a subcommittee.
Pardon, um, through the mayor, further question for the city attorney. Um, so my neighborhood, it has been, um, the host for, um, the, the fireworks. I feel a bit conflicted advocating for something that is a benefit for my neighborhood to push for, to be actively going out and trying to coordinate this. I, I'm not really sure what, what you're requesting that your subcommittee do. Are you looking for another location?
My understanding is Hyde doesn't work for this year, right? Because they have some construction?
Hyde will be, um, putting in solar panels, actually on the field where we shoot off the fireworks. So we actually don't know if it'll even be viable going forward until that project is finished, which we have been told possibly early summer of 2025, we won't be able to actually take sheriff and fire out there to assess the location.
Pardon, through the mayor, um, having watched the fireworks at that location and been on Hyde, and, and I would be concerned about, just as there's the issue with the, um, the little embers landing on the field at Cupertino High School, um, they're, they've changed what they're using, uh, it's a little bit lower, but, um, we would see them land on the, the roof of, of Hyde, and then, um, occasionally on the field, so they would also probably also land on, uh, the new solar panels.
Yes.
Which probably isn't really good for solar panels.
Yeah, so we definitely would have to take into consideration two things, which would be, they would definitely be in the fallout zone because the fallout zone is basically the back fence of Hyde to the school of Hyde. So it's very close, even with the low shell numbers that they're using right now. Um, if it falls on the, on the solar panels, we're either gonna have to pay to clean them or pay to fix them, depending on what it actually does to them, which could be quite a cost to the city.
Council member Wong and, uh, council member Mohan, and then council member Fuwen.
Uh, I'll wait.
Okay, council member Mohan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that we're all pass, feel passionately about July 4th festivities, but I am completely against fireworks. I mean, we've seen the havoc that, uh, with, with the fires in, uh, Southern California these last few weeks, and to even suggest or, or think about having fireworks, which, uh, could lead to all kinds of risks is, is in my opinion, completely irresponsible. I remember after this decision was made, being in a meeting with the sheriff's, uh, personnel as well as fire, and they all wanted to say how relieved they were that we did not have, uh, fireworks in 2024, I guess, 2024. And other cities have been looking at different kinds of options, the drones and other kinds of displays. And when, you know, we, we've seen the history, we've seen the havoc that, uh, we've all experienced in one way or the other in the last one month, and to even think about fireworks is something that I would not support. I feel very strongly about it as well.
Thank you. Council member Fuwen.
So to Director Sander, um, when you previously examined, or rather, when your predecessor previously examined sites in the city, did those also include private sites, or were they entirely public sites?
So they were mostly public sites, but there was conversation with private sites, and there was a resilient no, resounding no, uh, due to liability.
Got it, okay, makes sense, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, council member Wong.
So the purpose of the subcommittee is really to evaluate all these issues, uh, and, and that's really what the purpose is, it's not to make those decisions. Uh, the reason I went out to talk to some of the folks on fireworks, just so you know, was because we kept hearing that the vendors were not available, and that was the pushback we got from the city. So we thought we reached out to one of the vendors that, you know, we knocked on, actually on the person's door, and they said they had done fireworks for the city during the middle of the campaign, and I said, oh, that's kind of interesting, what's going on. Um, we should not sole-source any contracts, I would be against that. I think we should look at other vendors as well, um, in the bid process. But I think we should have a subcommittee to actually look at this, understand your constraints, because we haven't talked to you yet, of course, um, and understand what the vendors are able to do, and understand what the liabilities are and where we are. But I want to correct a misconception on solar panels. Solar panels, embers coming from fireworks are running about 1,000 degrees Celsius, glass melts at a much higher percentage than that. So any damage to the glass panels is probably not gonna happen, but they will be dirty, and there is a cleaning piece, and we probably do have to cover them. So I don't want that to be seen as, as a reason we don't do any of that, because the solar panels are going up, right? They can be covered. Uh, we've talked to other, I've talked to other fireworks companies in the past, and they can mitigate that, uh, and make sure that's in place. As for the staffing, I do have a question for you, because we have plans from previous years where we did do fireworks, um, or we could do a drone show, I'm not pushing, you know, those are options as well that a committee will decide. But we had options in the past, right, for staffing, and I think the budget number reflects that. Fireworks are somewhere between $30,000 to $40,000 for three-inch shells, right? For the rounds that we're using, and, and is that correct, right? Somewhere in the 40,000 to 50,000 range. It's the staffing that's really expensive, and so part of the subcommittee could do is we could explore working with other entities in the city or other entities in private, you know, private sector that we might want to sponsor or pay for it as well, so that we get the staffing. So I think it's really important to explore what staffing would look like, what you guys need, what inter-agencies need. And then if we can't come up with the money, that's one problem, right? If we need more help, we can do that, but, but let's at least look at the committee.
Uh, Vice Mayor Moore.
Um, so my objections have all been addressed, um, so if that is, uh, if you would repeat what your original motion was, and I believe you might have gotten a second.
Uh, I think, Mayor, you made the motion.
My motion, okay. I think I didn't write that one down. Kirsten, do you have that?
I think the motion was to make a sub, was the motion.
It was to, uh, approve a budget of $140,000 for the 2025 4th of July fireworks and to form a council subcommittee comprised of council members, council member Ray Wong and Vice Mayor Kitty Moore to bring back details for council approval.
Would you like to suggest us?
No, I.
It's okay.
Through the mayor, you had a second? Was it?
Was a second.
Oh, okay.
So we're all set. Um, no, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Um, oh, just to clarify, the meeting, I think we had with the Pyro Electrics? It, it was no way that we are implying we will use them for anything. It was, we were trying to find out what it takes to, to fireworks, what they consider. out what it takes to fireworks, what they consider in a site location. So it's more like an educational meeting to find out what's involved.
And also to address the availability issue, that the vendors might not be available.
No, I don't think there's any issue with that. I just wanted to clarify sort of what the scope of what, you know, the committee's responsibility would be and what it would not be.
Yeah, okay. So let's vote.
The motion carries with Mohan and Fron voting no.
So now it's 10:44, and we have one more item, that's number, item 12. So we need a motion to continue, or do we want to push this to the next? I'm hoping to get through this before February 19th, so that the city attorney could be the one that's finishing this up before his last day. So that...
So, so, yeah, so you would need, you would need a motion to hear the item at this point.
I'll make a motion to hear the item. If agenda item 12.
Second. So let's vote. Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Sorry, pardon me. Are we extending the meeting as well? Or is that required?
And also extending, in the same motion?
Extending the meeting to hear item 12?
Yeah, the, yeah, whether indefinitely or to a time certain.
Can you repeat that?
I understood the motion to continue to hear the item until the item is finished.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. The motion carries with Mohan and Fron voting no.
Okay, in the interest of time, let's go to public comment first.
Yes, mayor, I have one request to speak from in community hall, and I see currently no hands raised virtually. So Peggy Griffin?
Okay, then, three minutes.
Okay. Three minutes timer, please, video. Thank you. Welcome. It's on.
The mic, oh, there it goes. And can you turn the overhead on?
Yes, you just place your item on the overhead, the video will queue it up for you. We can see that.
Can I adjust it to show, can I adjust it to show the whole thing? I could push it up like that. Okay, thank you. Council members and staff, I've sent several emails, but this list that I'm displaying right now are the ones that I care about the most. I've got stars on the ones that I really care about. The first one is add a section prohibiting texting on the dais. Require all phones to be put away. The second one, add a section on informational memos. Return them to the agenda list at the bottom and allow the public to speak to them. Removal of commission members, only the council. Council training, add Brown Act and Rosenberg's rules. Section 6.6, council members' access to information, change to allow the council members to file public records requests. It could be, if they don't get a response, or it isn't put on the agenda within two weeks, then they are allowed to do it. Agenda publication, all written communication, even for non-agenda items, should be included. Meeting schedule, it was really nice that as soon as you get the mayor and vice mayor voted, you set the calendar, you assign the assignments, and then boom, January, you're ready to go. And I didn't realize that the mayor, the new mayor, didn't get to set the agenda. That should be corrected. And public comment, allow two to five people to combine their times, just sign two minutes per person. That gives them flexibility and it's easy to remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And there is one person, member of the public requesting to speak virtually, Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening again. I concur with everything that Peggy said. Also, I sent in some written comments to you, and I hope that you will read them from the dais, from the dais there. I don't have them in front of me. Some of them overlap with Peggy's, but there are others that do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. So I, I've sent a rail line version to the city attorney early, early January, and then I prepared a slide that has like one change for each slide that I'm proposing. So maybe I should just go through them quickly so that we can finish this. So first, this is, I just happened to come across this. This is a reporting policy we are not following. I'm just pointing that out. The policy says if any of us attend a meeting that's paid at the city expense, that should be briefly reported in the next publicly noticed meeting for both commission, council members and commissioners. And then this one is a current policy, but I would like to just confirm that the city manager shall keep council members informed of the city response when they respond to the residents, because sometimes it's, we are not aware of the city response to residents when we refer the question. And then this is also the, oh, sorry, the next one. It's somehow not going, okay, here. The current policy is city manager shall place requests that may require significant amount of time on the agenda, but so that it doesn't have to be requested by indeed two or three council members. So this shall be, so that the council can decide if that's important information to have. And now the following are a list of proposed changes. I have labeled them L1, L2, L3. The first one is removal that the mayor, vice mayor shall not serve consecutive terms. And the reason is other cities like Sunnyvale, when they, they used to require two terms for a mayor. I feel that when we had mayors that served two years in a row, we actually had pretty good stability, and they were able to get more things done. So it should be up to the council to decide if that's something they want or not. Why, there is no reason to limit that. L2 is replacing, so that the commissioners are not automatically removed when they fail to comply with any policy. This should be referred to the council, and the council then decide if that should be removed, since it's the council that appoint the commission. L3, add a sentence that's underlined in red, to keep alternate of all the committees informed of all correspondence for committee assignment. This is actually, is done by some external bodies already, such as I think Water District. They already inform both primary and alternate. So I think this ensure continuity in case anyone needs to step in, any alternate needs to step in. And L4, add the Brown Act and Rosenberg's rule training in the training for new city council and the city commissioner. And L5, add the point that city manager, in a city manager form of government, to enable the city council to make informed decisions while weighing community input, the city manager provides staff recommendations and presents options along with their associated pros and cons, rather than only one recommendation. This, in fact, is the recommendation by the ICMA, the City Managers Association, in their evaluation form. So that's a common practice in city manager form of government. This is the quote from ICMA evaluation form. And L6, add, to improve relationship between council and manager, I think we need to assume positive intent. So this paragraph I'm adding says, "In the event that any suggestion or comment from an individual council member might be perceived as an instruction or direction by the city, by the city manager or any staff, the city manager or staff should assume positive intent and treat it as a suggestion or comment." So that, because if anything is perceived as a direction from a council member, likely the council member only meant it as comment and suggestion. We shouldn't be blaming each other for violating this or that. L7, replace this paragraph so that a council member may file a public records request. I think there, this, this original sentence was added with due to a misunderstanding. Public records request is very different from information request directly to a city manager. Public records request can only find records that already exist. It usually doesn't take extra staff work, and a lot of agency already have automatic system to handle that. And when a council member requests certain information, the staff has to produce, which may be easily readily available, that can be provided if it requires significant time. City manager refer that to the entire council to decide. That process is already there. Therefore, there is no reason to not allow council member to file public records request. L8, two proposals, I think one is for future agenda item. At the requesters discretion, agenda request may also include additional information explaining the rationale or timing of the agenda item. Because right now, the TPD sometimes has only one line description, which might not be sufficient. And then the future agenda item section of each regular council meeting should include a document which just lists all the future agenda item requests that's already there. I think the city clerk is always collecting the list. That list should be readily available. That way, we know what's already being proposed. L8, replace, oh, sorry, L8 is already done. L9, for agenda item description, I would like to be sure that agenda description is meaningful for common residents, and then for the residents to easily find out relevant agenda item. So if an item includes any budget request or modification, the amount should be specified for transparency when possible. The brief description should be comprehensible by a common resident. For example, an amendment to the municipal code should include a description of the amendment, rather than only the code section to be amended. This happened before, that's why I added this. An item related to a development project should include not only the street address, but also the common name of the project when applicable. I think a lot of project has a nickname, which the city website also lists. That way, it's easier for people. And the second reading of an ordinance should have the same agenda title as the first reading, because at times, the second reading has a very different agenda title. It's hard to know they are the same item. And L10, add a staff report to include dates of past meetings and maps. This is usually happen in staff, some staff report, but some doesn't have this practice. But I think especially public works, they do very good background. So I'm, I just want to emphasize the background section should include the dates and at least a month and year of previous meetings that were held and decisions were made on the item, so public can easily look at the meetings for reference. And when applicable, include the maps and charts. And also here, the reasons for the recommendation that's already in there, I'm adding an available options, comply with the other thing I mentioned. L11, for written communication, this is a new section. Right now, we don't have a section for written communication. All written communications on agenda items sent after the meeting agenda is posted shall be included in the written communications document of the council meeting. Any written communications on items not on the agenda shall be included in the document if the sender indicates that they desire to be included. I do think we do need the sender to indicate that, because there are a lot of emails that we receive. It may or may not be intended for the council meeting. And written communication will be posted by 5:00 PM before the 6:45 PM council meeting, and updated and posted the next day with any additional comments received. I think this is a current practice. L12, I think there are some other practice that city clerk has mentioned to me. Maybe if those can be clarified, the current practice, that would be best. For example, only written communication sent after the agenda is posted would be included. That probably should be added. L12, add, this just to be sure, be sure that when a regular council meeting is moved to Wednesday, all the, all the, the starting time should remain the same, and the agenda posting time should be the same, that's the prior Wednesday, and all the items should be the same as the regular meeting. I think that's understood, but it's not written down. And L13, there are two portions to this. One is to add info memos to the council agenda. I added that as the 15th. I think this is like council report. Right now, likely we don't have comment, public comments directly on the info memo. I'm not sure if we strongly want that, because I think we are running out of time always until to the last item. Then L13B, council report may include, I am trying to emphasize, council report shouldn't be just limited to events we attend. I think that's, it should, council reports should be more meaningful. It should, a report may include matters that the council think, announcement they think the public should know, or anything they do that's serving the constituents. they think the public should know or anything they do that's serving the constituents. So that's, um, that included there. And then L fourteen is a replacement so that anyone can pull a consent item of agenda. And of course, I think staff does appreciate advance notice. So when possible, um, to facilitate an efficient meeting, advance notice to city manager and city clerk by 12 o'clock on the day of the council member is still appreciated. For this item, I actually consulted with a few other cities. Sunnyvale, St. Clair and Fremont all have the same practice we used to have, which is anyone can pull this consent agenda. Um, so there are some cities that do have restrictions. And then, um, L fifteen is replace, um, the limit that I think the current practice is only per group of five or more can combine their minutes. So this is just changing so that any group of two to five can combine their minutes. When they combine, it's too many per person, two minutes per person. Um, L sixteen is, um, I would like to add that the good practice former mayor Darcy Paul um, used is council members are encouraged to yield any unused speaking time to colleagues who have already used their allotted time. I remember this builds a lot of positive, uh, relationship between council members because that means people are interested in your ideas. And L seventeen, replace in the, replace this portion since, um, I think this was added last time that we say we will reserve the remaining time, but we never do that. And we just assume the remaining time will be kept. So that's not really useful, so I'm removing that. And, um, this rule shall displace any conflicting rule. I think this applies to every item, so it seems redundant to add for only this item. Anything that's conflict with the city rule, um, this override that. And then, um, so I'd, so I'd like to add the mayor. Oh, wait, to encourage meaningful discussion and exchange of ideas. This kind of, I think this is a sentence segment. I'm not sure, maybe we can remove that, yeah. Okay, L eighteen, access to closed session material. This is from the to BD list. Um, I'm, I added one more section. Any documents referenced or presented during closed session shall be shared with council members upon request and shared in the same manner as other closed session materials for confidentiality. This was necessary because there were some items the staff was unwilling to share. And L eighteen, I'm adding a section for information memo. Um, this is a current practice. Hmm, two council members may request an information memo to be provided on an issue pertaining to the city business. The city manager shall place request that impose a significant workload on staff on the council agenda for review by the full council along with a statement from that council member as to why the information is needed. Um, I think it's important to have a statement from the council member because a lot of times, um, we don't know why an information is important to learn, to be provided unless we, but the council members cannot talk to each other. So that only when on the agenda we can find out. And then, and this is also a new item for information memo. Um, I, I would like to provide a venue for information memo per written by council members. Individual council members may prepare information memos for including in their council activity report. Um, through these memos, maybe not in their council activity report, I'm not sure. Oh, um, yeah, maybe, yes. Through these memos, council members can share any information they have received, whether from staff or other sources with their fellow council members and the public, thereby enhancing transparency and accountability in city operations. The memos shall not include information which is protected by law from disclosure. Um, and that's the end. Okay, so that's the list of my proposal. Um, it's eleven oh nine. If. So anyone have comments or if not, I'll just make a motion for council, uh, vice mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, for going so thoroughly through the procedures manual. Um, I think, I think the, there was only one in here that I thought might cause some issues. But you did explain yourself very well with it. It was, um, uh, L, I, I don't know if it's still L fourteen, but it's eight point four point two, the allowing members of the public to pull, um, the consent items. So what you're saying is that when you did some reviews of other cities, um, you found that other cities allow their members of the public to pull consent items. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And but I think Mayor Pittas is more restrictive. And Mountain View, they are more restrictive. I forgot exactly, but Sunnyvale, St. Clair and Fremont is anyone.
Okay, but that, okay, thank you, Mayor. And that's the one that I do find concerning. And the reason why is, is that members of the public might not know all the information for how an item ended up on consent. Um, so it's something that you can try going to this method and then, if it, if it's not working out the way you intended, um, or you're finding that too many items are getting pulled off of consent, uh, then, then, then we have an issue, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought is since we have been doing that before 2023 for all of the corporate council meeting. So why don't the public really want to restore that? So I thought we should try it out. And I still kept the current good practice of let's give advance notice when possible. So we have, um, let's see how it works out.
Okay.
Maybe we all will have advance notice, then, yeah.
Okay, um, thank you through, through the mayor also. I, I, um, I think with this particular item, the concern is also with regards to time management for the meetings. Um, because we, we are, and you see it's only, it's eleven twelve and we've gotten to the last item and it was a pretty packed agenda. Um, so we want to make sure that, uh, that, that we maintain that efficiency. So I'd like to hear from the other council members out of all of them. This was the one that I took issue with.
Okay, um, council member.
Which number that was, what number were you kidding me?
L fourteen.
Vice mayor, which one?
Do you have my slide? Do you, does everyone have my slide deck? Um, Kristen, could you send it to them?
Sorry, real quick, L fourteen is, is which?
Uh, it's, uh, anyone can pull items from consent.
Uh, council member Mohan. Um, thank you for the very detailed comments you made on the policies and procedures manual, Mayor. I was wondering, since there are so many details, could we just, um, agendaize it for a future date and actually discuss each of these if necessary in detail? Because it's, it's a lot to be deciding on. Are we going to do item by item or are we, how are we going to do this? And since we have your comments, is it possible to just come back the next time and, and comment on, on your proposal?
I, I submitted in early January. Uh, city attorney doesn't think it's appropriate to include my proposal on the agenda. So that's why I'm presenting today. But I think, I hope to finish this revision before the city attorney leaves because he is the most familiar with this item. And that's why I hope we have a motion to get, to approve this. Um, if you would like to make any amend change, please suggest them now.
Uh, just for clarification, is this, uh, is this attorney Jensen's last council meeting?
No. February, February nineteenth will be my last council meeting.
So this will.
Bring it back on the nineteenth?
Yeah, so it will come back on the nineteenth for, um, there will be likely a good red line verging. And then hopefully we approve. So it will be an action item to approve. And of course, at that time, if you would like to make changes, you can still do. But hopefully then the change will be minor. Then, um, maybe the interim city attorney will be, it'll be easier for the interim attorney to take over. Yeah, um, so council member Fu and vice mayor Moore.
I mean, I'm happy to go through each of the ones that you've got here. Um, but I, I do tend to agree with council member Mohan that there is quite a lot and it would be valuable to be able to have additional discussion on the topic, considering the amount of work that you've put into it. Um, and the relatively short notice on which I think either of us has seen it. Um, but I can give you my initial impressions if there are things that you might be open to altering. So on six point six, I think that if this is something that you want to proceed with, I would just suggest that it be handled in a fashion similar to the TBD and that it be brought, um, either with one council meeting per month or at a very specific location on the, the calendar so that it's not something that is going to consume an enormous amount of time.
Public records request?
No, 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 six point six, I'm sorry, this is, this is an alteration to six point six. Uh, council member access to information. So there's an amendment here that you propose the city manager to place request that impose significant workload on staff and the council agenda for review, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I would just suggest that we handle that by, in a manner similar to the TBD list.
Wait, six point six, the only thing I modified is regarding public records request.
I'm looking at the section that says confirm, it's a slide.
Oh, confirm, that means it's already there.
Precisely, I'm just saying, I think, I think that's the method that you could use to, to make that work.
Um, that's already the, in there. So you want to change that?
No, I'm not saying that you change it. I'm saying that I think that that's the method that would make that work.
Council member Fu, can you, can you elaborate on how, how to simplify that? I think you're trying to propose something to simplify.
Yeah, no, just the, the process would be, that would be, um, handled in a fashion similar to the TBD list. So if you have a, a series of requests that put too much workload on, uh, on staff, um, that goes beyond what the municipal code would ordinarily allow for one council member's request through the city manager, then the city manager would add it to a matrix that is modeled on the TBD list so that we can handle it in a, a clear and orderly fashion.
Okay, um, any other comments?
On your L two, which modifies rule four point five. The specific things that are here that would allow for a commissioner's removal are entirely objective in character. There are attendance policies and, um, disclosure filings and things like that. You'll recall that we, um, we changed this rule last time because we had a commissioner who had failed to file a Form 700 for two year, actually over a year. Um, and there wasn't really a mechanism for handling that in a meaningful way other than dragging that person in front of council and doing so on a removal basis. And that seemed unnecessary. Um, there's still always the option for the individual commissioner to ask to have the requirement waived and be allowed to continue to serve. So we use the same policy that we already applied to it for attendance for ethics filings and training. And I don't really see why we would need to change that. So I just disagree with this change. Right, if it's, if it's, you know, for some other reason, then yeah, that's not something that's within the, the purview of the, the clerk. These are all objective, however. It's, did you file this, did you show up to?
Sometimes attendance, there could be extraneous circumstances. So I think it should be at the discretion of the council.
I mean, in essence, it already is. They would come to us and ask for a waiver from this requirement. That's how we already functioned. We added more to it in order to, to deal with the situation that arose between 2022 and 2023.
It just feels odd, it's appointed by the council, but removal is, is not by the council.
And all I'm saying is that always used to be the rule anyway for, for attendance. All we did was extend it to other adherence to items inside the commissioner's handbook specifically, um, training and disclosure.
Okay, thank you, um, so do, are we counting? Um, okay, never mind. I think it's already eleven twenty one. Anything more?
I mean, I, I intended to go through everything if you want.
Um, council member Moore, uh, vice mayor Moore, do you have anything?
Um, so if, if you're trying to push something through tonight, um, I would remove item L fourteen and, uh, include all of your other items.
Okay. So you will not allow?
No, I would retain that, um, authority in the council. Um, and if you want to make a change at another time, then that could be done.
Okay. Do we allow council to pull at any time or it still has to pull by noon?
Well, personally, I would still leave it by noon.
Mm-hmm, so no change for fourteen at all?
I, through the mayor, I, personally, I would wait and see how the other changes, um, are managed and then, and then look at this one. Or you can say, you know, if someone's making a motion, that we'll look at this in six months.
Okay, why don't I make this simpler? I will make a motion to approve, uh, all of the changes that I have proposed here. And then, um, if you want to make a change, then we do friendly amendment. And that way we know what's changing. So now it's all of the more proposal here minus L fourteen. That's the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second and propose a friendly amendment to review L fourteen at a later date.
Okay. What do you mean by later day?
You can bring it back up, you can bring it back up again, uh, at another point in time.
Okay. And it will come back on the nineteenth anyway.
Yes, it can come back on the nineteenth.
If public feels very strongly about this, they can express that. If public feels very strongly about this, they can express that, yeah.
So I need a second on a friendly amendment?
Oh, I, I approve, I'm the motion maker.
Okay, cool.
Approve the amendment. Any friendly amendment? Anyone wants to be considered? Councilmember Mohan?
I, I did want to make a couple of changes, but I think I'm willing to wait till it comes back.
Until the final version.
Yep, till I see the final version.
Okay.
And, and we will have an opportunity to discuss each item at that point.
It will be an action item, likely it will have red line verging from the City Attorney. So for any action item, you can always propose, I would like to change something and make a motion for what you would like to change, right? Yeah, okay. Then, if no more comments, let's vote on this.
Motion carries with Fu and voting now.
And I think that's the end. We have the City Manager's report, and we will skip that since it's eleven twenty five. Okay. Then, the meeting is adjourned. Twenty-five minutes more than my plan.